This time I'd like to go ahead and call the order, the Planning Commission work lead or the work session agenda for February of 2023. First thing, I'd like to call us to order for a roll call, please. And then back to staff. Love you.
Okay. Commissioner Green. Commissioner. Commissioner Agnew.
Here.
Commissioner Sherry Camillo.
Here.
Vice Chair Hours.
Here.
Commissioner Zornico.
Commissioner.
Here.
Hi, I'm Sean.
No, come on up. So on Monday night at eleven. Yes.
We've got here. Yeah, yeah. And Commissioner Green. At this time, obviously, we go with this standing here. But.
I believe you. You are the light of the United States of America, the true republic, the voice of sin, one nation, one God, indivisible, infinite. And God is the law.
Can I, did I introduce our staff at the last meeting? Or is this your first? Okay, then that's, just wanted to make sure.
Who's Sheila?
So we are going to tactic some of these presentations. So I'm going to start with what I would like to have us do for our agenda. So in the past, the agendas, I need to call that. In the past, the titles of the different applications weren't really consistent. So what I'm planning is that we establish a consistent, what I call blurb, where it says a request by the owner of the applicant, four A and what their request is, the name of the request, put in the number of acres, the name of the request, where it's located, and then the parcel numbers available to put back. This would consistently be used on the agenda, be used on public notice, and then would carry through to the town council as well. So I think this is a little more helpful for when we send out the public notices to people. It doesn't just say home place, ranch, family, six, and people are like, I have no clue where that is. You can tie it to a parcel number, they can look on the assessors, or it gives a general location. So, thank you. Everybody agree with that? Okay.
Is it, is it possible, and obviously, when we have this, because it's still going to go out to the public, is there something like a, within that parcel number, a link or something that we can give, that can be on the website or something along that lines to make it easy for them to gain the information they need in order to advocate for their likes or dislikes? I guess that's my best.
And so in the public notice, since it's a physically mailed document, you would like to have a web address that we could link it to?
OQ.
Maybe documents on demand or something like that?
Yes, ma'am. An OQR, a NFC, RFID, something that is going to give them, again, those individuals that may not be as savvy with that technological aspect of it, but something to reach out to it.
Maybe we could do QR codes for our public notice?
Some, yeah, something that would give them everything. The value aspect is what I'm truly looking at, is how are we providing them everything they could possibly do to not say we never gave them? No, it's all right there. All you have to do is scan it with your phone. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, because it'd be nice if we could do a hyperlink, but a hyperlink doesn't work on the hot buttons.
Yes, ma'am.
But if you do, we'll see what we can work on for that.
Perfect. Yeah, don't want to be the speed bump. I just want to make sure we can keep pushing it through a little bit.
Works for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That looks good, though.
So the next one I will go to is the staff reports. Give me a minute.
Did we get bigger screens?
Uh, that was on me.
Okay, great. No, this is wonderful. I was looking at you like, what happened?
So the staff report, we're keeping kind of the general format as far as what it looks like with colors and stuff. We might change the colors to match, you're going to see presentations in a minute. But what I wanted to focus on is trying to make our staff reports more all-inclusive for a public record and making them the public record so that if we do ever face any type of litigation, we have all the documentation we need in this record for you.
Sure.
So the top part, we're really not changing much. It's that brief summary of, you know, in that table format. The project summary right here is, we're going to put the blurb first, the same thing that goes out to everyone, so it's consistent across the agenda, through the staff report, to the public notice. Then we'll go into just a really brief summary of how many lots, tracts, who the utility providers are. So this project summary is really just a clue in on the important stuff upfront, just to give you an idea of where it is. Then we're going to consistently go to a vicinity map. Now, the one I have right here isn't the best, but we're going to start trying to use Google Earth a little more so that we can put in a close-up zoom and zoomed-out version, and you'll see that in the presentation in just a minute. But consistently providing you a vicinity map that you can see with satellite imagery, if you haven't had a chance to be out to where the actual project is, you get at least the latest per Google, what it looks like.
Sheila, do you mind if we ask questions?
No, go ahead.
On this, it may just be me, but that white green is really hard for me to see. A red or, yeah.
I think that one, I don't think we produced this. I think this was one that the applicant produced. But I get what you're saying. So when we get to the presentations, remember that Luke did the presentation, the slide, PowerPoint presentation we're going to use. When we get to that one, look at what we're offering and provide that same input there. Because again, we're trying to be consistent with what's on the slide versus what's in the staff report so that we can just keep pulling from it. But I do agree. So that's why the red arrow was there, but the green would be better. All right. So then we will consistently put the zoning map in there so you can see the surrounding zoning and what the land uses are, what the zoning is, so that you have that reference. When we get to the comprehensive plan, we're going to start looking at separating it out. So we have the comprehensive plan with the future land use, which makes a difference, but we also want to tie it back to our goals and objectives and specifically list those in this section. So we could change this up a little depending on how busy it gets, but I do think it's important not to just list the land use plan, but to also go back to the goals, policies, and objectives within the comprehensive plan. So next, we're going to put the review criteria in your staff report so that you have that upfront to read through before you even start looking at the document, to kind of remind you. You can go back in references as you're going, but instead of us providing it as a separate attachment, we're going to include it in the staff report. The other thing we thought about doing, and you can tell me if you like this idea or not, is within this criteria, we can put whether or not it does apply. If it's coming to you and we're recommending approval, it's going to apply. I mean, if the criteria have been met. But we could also put a little more detail in here. I'm just wondering if that's something you want, if you don't want it, or do you want us to maybe just address some of the criteria that were a little more tricky? Think about that in this area. For instance, if we look at number two and it says harmonious development and lot pattern, and we can say, well, we're not really sure that it's harmonious, but we had them add in landscaping, we had them add in X, Y, Z. So is that something you'd be interested in? Or do you want us to detail that in another area of the report?
I, I had a huge problem with these because I felt like, and I mentioned this to you last time, if you are going to answer them, if you're going to comment on the review criteria, I would really like to see it be more accurate and more subjective because, or objective, rather, because, you know that one, there's one that says infill, you know, is this infill? And it's really hard for me to believe that's infill when cattle was grazing there two years ago. That, to me, is not infill. So when I read that in one of these, I go, well, you know, did they, it's not that it was a lie, it's that it was using infill in a way that we, as planners, don't usually use it. And so I started downing the whole staff report because I saw some things that looked to me like they were leaning in favor of the developer.
Okay.
So you are in support of us?
And why is it really accurate?
Yeah, the one you're referring to was the comprehensive plan goal and objective. And we, that was the one, it was like the infill. I remember which case it was. That wasn't a review criteria. That was a comprehensive plan element. But I think, I take your note on that. So when we're doing those land use elements within the comprehensive plan, let's make sure we're not just stretching it to find something, making sure that we are detailing why we think it is.
Yeah.
With the criteria, like I said, if it meets the criteria, we're bringing it to you, unless we're recommending denial. If it doesn't meet the criteria, we're being asked to bring it to you so they can argue that it does, if that makes sense. So my question is like, if we had between these one and 10 review criteria, and there were one or two where we had to work with a developer to address it, and it may still be a question, would you like us to highlight that in this review criteria area? Or would you like us to highlight it later on when we're talking about the project in more detail?
I would say highlight it later in on when we're talking about it in detail, when the commissioners or when the planning commissioners are discussing it. The reason why I say that is because within the public document, if we put it in where you are identifying that it meets a certain criteria, and it met it, but you're still biased upon it, now it looks like you're favoring our decision to say, or turn it off. So that's why I'm just sort of, let's, let's, I would say, I mean, in this case, like we're talking about number two, plat purpose for harmonious development, I would come back and say, okay, what is that, planning department? And tell me exactly why you think it is applicable for us to consider this. Well, we didn't really see it as applicable, but.
Okay.
Because this way, now we can have a public conversation about it, instead of the document being one way or forced to identify this is exactly what it is. What you believe it is. This way, the panel at least gets the opportunity to look at it subjectively.
I like that. Okay, we can do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think, based on, based on his point, I think we've come to where we do a pretty good job of asking questions. So if there's something in here that we have questions about, you're going to get them.
Yes, we are.
And at that point, you'd be prepared to discuss them if you feel there's something that you should throw out to us.
We're going to throw it out to you anyway. Right.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I will move on down. So that's the review criteria. Oh, jeez, please don't disappear on me now.
Good job, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, man.
So then the project analysis, we're going to talk to you about the history, you know, when it was, if we can find all the history, we will. When it was annexed, if there were any agreements, any type of detailed history we can provide to you without having to go into the storage units and pull out files from back then. But we're going to try to do as much history so you know where we are, what, how we got to where we are. The project summary is where we're going to go into a little more detail about what the project looks like. And we're going to try to continue to provide specific analysis on the items that are, they're required to submit. So if they're required to submit a traffic report, we're going to go into the traffic, summarize the highlights, the details. Same with drainage, utilities, I threw wildfire in here because I know that's been an issue with some developments. Geotechnical, if they have slopes, if they have downslope creep, anything like that going into that. So we will pull from the reports that they submit, put them into this report so you have that information without having to go through and ask for a copy of the entire geotechnical report or anything like that. We'll hit the highlights. Now, and I'm going to clarify real quick, the staff report I have in front of you is what we're sending to the council. So yours is going to be the exact same, it'll just not have the planning commission recommendation. And the reason I wanted to do the town council version, so you would see what we would be sending to them, to get your blessing on that as well.
So in essence, it's kind of an executive summary.
Yes. Yeah. So anything, if there's anything that we think is, deserves its own sub-paragraph in this, we're going to put it in there. But these are, these tend to be the ones that we will always address. Who's providing the utilities? Where are they tying in? What drainage basin is it in? How are they handling the drainage? So the big-ticket items. But if you come to one where they have to do a wildfire mitigation, then we're going to talk about that as well.
Sheila, if this is the one going to the town council, where do you tell them what the planning commission recommendation?
It'll be a little further down.
Okay. I, I have noticed, this was one time listening to a council meeting before any of you were here, where they presented the whole thing and did a, and then did a, oh, and by the way, the planning commission voted against it. And I just, you know, I just felt like the vote of this board almost was skipped.
Okay. Yeah. Our goal is to, we include it. Another thing we're, you'll see in a little bit, is do we want to include the minutes in the staff report or have them separate? To me, having them in the staff report makes a little more sense because it gives the summary and the details to go along with why you voted the way you did, but we'll get to that. But yes, so the rationale behind it was to put all of the facts up front and then the recommendations from planning commission staff at the bottom.
Would, would it be possible, and I see what Commissioner Green is talking about, and I think I completely agree with what she's saying, even though the executive summary's up there, specifically the one that goes directly to the, the council, if the secondary, here's the executive, but now put, this is what the planning commission, because they already know the nuts and bolts, but at least they see it going in and not in the back end of that document.
So you want it at the front of this or at the front of the board memo? So we do a?
The, the front of the board, the memo that goes up to the town council.
Okay.
So it would be the executive summary, but I see what Kathy's saying is that it should be right on that front page. Because by the time they go through the rest of the stuff and see it, and they hear the narrative, they already have a precursor, they understand completely what we talked about.
Okay.
And why we agreed or did not agree towards that individual subject.
Yep.
Yeah, and I agree with that because I have on multiple occasions in the last year.
Eighteen years?
I know. But in the last year, it's only when we deny.
Yeah.
Or when we put a condition, do I believe, and I believe all the other commissioners believe, that the council should clearly understand why we have taken a position contrary to a position that you have taken. Sometime we do it with good reason, and sometimes we do it against their decision. And, but that's always come, for example, not this last meeting, well, even in the last meeting, they were given our rationale and our minutes when they came to the meeting. And I'm going to guarantee you, I, I'm sorry, I think we have very conscientious council members, but they're busy people too. And whatever they've read, that's what they've come with. And then they get into conversations, and so them having time to read during the minutes, I mean, during the meeting, what we have said, why we've done, may or may not get digested.
Yeah.
And I think that's important, that they get it early on, and that's, as you know, I.
Yes. And in that case, that was my error because I did the minutes, but I forgot that, I forgot about the attachment. I did, so.
But.
Yeah.
But I'm not.
But I get what you're saying.
I'm not faulting you for that.
Why was I?
Don't get me wrong. No, no.
It was.
I'm, I'm saying it's happened multiple times before.
And that's why I think if we include the minutes in the staff report, it's there. It's on us to put it in there, and it's not something that is an attachment that we forget.
And it could also be part of the presentation when you're actually speaking to it.
Okay.
Well, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's a question. I'll make this comment because I think it's, it's appropriate based on what we're saying here. When it gets to the council, there's a presentation made by your department, there's a presentation made by the applicant, there's public comment, there's nothing verbally related to what the planning commissions.
There is in the staff presentation. They do the planning commission motion, but not a summary of what the planning commission said.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And, but yet, the planning department makes all the comments about your, all your detail, the applicant also, and then the publisher. And that's why I think it's important that somewhere or another, and I've felt that ever since I've been on this commission, that it's very important that the council understand in those rare exceptions where we take opposition to what the planning department has said they approve, why we, what, what we are leaning on to say you need to consider another side also.
Okay.
So I don't know how we do that, but.
No, I think we can, well, the minutes we'll put in the staff report, but in the presentation, instead of just having the planning commission motion, we can have not the full minutes, but maybe bulleted points of, you know, they expressed concerns over traffic, blah, 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 whatever it is that you expressed concerns about, which led to the motion, and then go into the motion.
Yeah.
Now, what I think we will want to do, and we can bring this up, well, I'll just bring it up now with minutes, is because there's a quick turnaround for us as staff between tonight's meeting and then Monday, when I have to have my staff report for council, what we'll probably need to do is send the minutes out for you to review and hopefully get your blessing before we cut and paste them into a staff report. Because I know, like, Commissioner, I keep saying Commissioner too. Oh, you are Commissioner, yes. Sorry. But when you brought up some changes that you wanted to see them to, to the minutes.
Right.
That's the, that's the rub, is that, you know, we leave this meeting, Luke goes and does minutes tomorrow and Friday, and somehow we have to have some sort of a blessing, or what we put in there, you may not reflect, think accurately reflects what you said. So just know that sometimes there is going to be that quick turnaround where we have to have those minutes in by Monday, and we may not be able to have you look at them as quickly or get your feedback because you may be traveling or whatever it is, but just know that, that may sometimes happen. And then if you bring it up afterwards, we can make the amendments and then give them to council.
All right. I know, I know, once that council package goes in, getting that amended becomes a big issue for a lot of people. Okay?
Yeah.
And so, and that's why when I communicated with you on that, I wasn't wanting to, I just wanted to make sure, and you, you took care of things the way that needed to be taken care of.
And we can always do a supplemental after the fact. It's, it's just that initial one, you may get in there and see that it's wrong, and that, that would be why, is that we, the turnaround time sometimes doesn't allow us to get your feedback on the minutes before we put them in there. But, I mean, we.
Well, I'm taking the minutes, I'm sure. I wouldn't want to be doing that, so lots of luck there.
All right. So project summary, we're good with that. With final plats, we're going to start including the public improvements agreement. We won't be attaching that to this because it's a standardized thing, but what we'll try to do is go into details of like, what, what are their public improvements? How much will they be looking to put in there if we have all that information? But just to give you an idea of what the agreement, what they're going to be bonding for, I think it's just part of the record we should do. Land dedication, we're going to go into this in more detail as well. School, are they going to dedicate land? Are they paying fees in lieu of that? Same for park, are they dedicating, are they paying fees in lieu? And in some cases, they're in Triview and we're not getting either. So it just really depends. But we're going to go into land dedication, so we have that. Some of the things I thought we might include, but again, traffic impact fees, those are something that we collect at the time of building permit, they're, they're really non-negotiable unless they're using those for something else. Drainage fees are kind of the same, and then if they're in Triview, they go to Triview instead of us. So really depends. So we'll keep looking at those to see if that's something that, if you want to have it, we can add it. I don't know that it will change ever until we update our impact fees or our fee schedule. Another section we thought about is next steps. So they've approved the final plat, what's their next step? Well, now they have to submit an administrative site plan, or they just did a preliminary, now they have to do a final. I don't know that you necessarily need to know that, so it might just be extra stuff in the staff report, but what's your thought on that? You like the next steps?
Yeah.
And it may just be a simple little bullet, like the next step in the process is to do this.
We, yeah, we talked about the, this last meeting about the sidewalks going in prior to giving out the building permits. Yeah, for, four, I think it was.
Six.
Six. With those sidewalks, obviously, still not done yet, I'm assuming in something like this, that would give that status update, you know, what we agreed upon, and I'm assuming as of, like a timestamp, what we agreed upon, this is what we're talking about now, and this is the duration or time on which it should be completed as an S, or something in a, in a timeframe.
So would that be, so let's say filing six, let's say filing eight comes in, and we give you an update on the filing six status of the sidewalk, so that, that was tied to filing six. Filing six is through the system, they're not going to be coming back to you, but with filing seven, we could give you the next steps, filing six finally completed this, some kind, something like that? Is that what you're thinking?
I think, I think it's beneficial, and I say that simply because, again, even with filing seven and filing eight that will be forthcoming, we already know the prerequisite's still going to be what was lined up in filing six. But if we go in blindly and we forget down the line, hey, wait a minute, I know there was something on six. At least going into seven and eight, we have a timeline to say, hey, we agreed on six would have the sidewalk, seven and eight should have the sidewalk. You know, so that way, I think what ends up happening is just by everything else, yeah, I forgot about that, and let's not even look at it.
So it would be the next steps as far as what the applicant has to do for that project, but also a status update for previous conditions on the development. So for instance, all of Home Place, we can say, oh, they've, they've done filings one and two, they're working on filing three, just kind of a quick little status update based on conditions that are in place.
Conditions that are in place, correct.
They haven't built the road yet, they have put the sidewalks in, they have not, whatever those are.
Correct. I would say overall conditions for the individual, over, the overall overarching project.
Okay.
That still is incumbent upon each phase, that's correct.
Okay. We will do our best to do those too. Yeah.
Well, we talked about what's coming next. If it's in the system now, I've never seen it and couldn't find it. Is there a way to do a diagram for us that shows what the process is? Well, no.
I know, yeah.
Let's, let's, I don't want to make it.
Well, I'm just laughing because there's a really ugly one that we all three hate. So we've had this conversation about how can we do this, but go ahead.
Well, you, you know, we get a sketch plan, that's, that's the start. Well, then what happens after the sketch plan? Well, we're, we're going to get a PUD or we're going to get something.
So do you want, so we have this section earlier that talks about like the entitlements, where they have, so if they have an annexation, then they did a sketch plan, then they did a preliminary plat, this is step four in the process. Is that enough? Or do you want a, we're on step three of seven kind of summary?
Well, here, okay, I'll tell you what my concern boils down to. I've seen sketch plans come in, and then I'll, I'll make the point I've made before. I've been on here since 2015 as either an alternate or permanent. So I've seen. That still is incumbent upon each phase, that's correct.
Okay. We will do our best to do those too, yeah.
Well, we talked about what's coming next. If it's in the system now, I've never seen it and couldn't find it. Is there a way to do a diagram for us that shows what the process is? Well, no.
I know, yeah. Well, I'm just laughing because there's a really ugly one that we all three hate. So we've had this conversation about how can we do this, but go ahead.
Well, you, you know, we get a sketch plan, that's, that's the start. Well, then what happens after the sketch plan? Well, we're, we're going to get a PUD or we're going to get something.
So do you want, so we have this section earlier that talks about like the entitlements, where they have, so if they have an annexation, then they did a sketch plan, then they did a preliminary plat, this is step four in the process. Is that enough, or do you want a, we're on step three of seven kind of summary?
Here, okay, I'll tell you what my concern boils down to. I've seen sketch plans come in, and then I'll, I'll make the point I've made before. I've been on here since 2015 as either an alternate or permanent. So I've seen a lot of changes over here, but one thing that I've seen, we get sketch plans in here, and the commission will approve the sketch plan. We won't make any big issues, but a lot of things change. From the time that sketch plan is approved, two years down the road, there's been other PUDs that have been approved, but some of the things that are in that sketch plan are totally against the comprehensive plan, which I think is our biggest responsibility to be looking at. But if we don't, if we don't know what the next step is, or if the next step, and, and I'll be very blunt, there was a big issue that came up here, and this is not under your watch. But under a, an immediate previous watch, it was decided that there would be a preliminary and final PUD on something. Well, when a preliminary and final PUD comes forward to us, no matter what we did on the sketch plan, it's going to be very difficult for this commission to say, look, there ought to be less of this based on the comprehensive plan. We can say it, in fact, we said it, but the trustees said to heck with it. Well, they're right saying to heck with it, and I knew that was going to be when I, we made the, but here's, because when they, when we get a preliminary and final at the same time, the applicant has done tremendous amount of expense to present the final. So even though we find things that have changed that the council should consider, we can't expect the council to tell the applicant, well, because they may think the same thing. But how are you going to tell an applicant, you spent hundreds of thousands of dollars maybe putting together all the things that you need to put together for a final? Am I making sense?
Yes, but I don't know how a diagram is going to help that. Because a, a sketch plan is part of the subdivision process, the way the code is now. Whereas the PUD is the zoning process. So that's the way the code is now, is that you do a sketch plan, then a preliminary plat, then a final plat. And then the PUD is over here where you do a preliminary PUD or a final, or you can do a combo. So like, for instance, like, I think KFC, KFC was a preliminary final combo. Does it make sense to make something that small do a preliminary when it's a one lot, one building? That's when you do a preliminary final combo as far as, because you, you don't get less information, and they're doing just as much work with both. I, I don't know if that explained it well enough, but when it's something small, a preliminary final combo makes sense. But if it's something large, like a home place ranch, single family, that's when you want to do a preliminary and then a final.
I have no doubt that you will apply that appropriately. Okay? All right. I'm just saying, it wasn't applied appropriately before, it was applied based on ordinance that said.
Oh, is that the new ordinance that?
Yeah, it said there.
Okay.
That the director could do it if he didn't think there was going to be a controversial item. Well, I'm not sure, well, okay, I'm getting out of the ballpark now, okay?
That was repealed, so we're good with that one now.
Well, I don't know whether it was, no, I think.
No, it was repealed, it was. It was, I don't know the exact wording of the ordinance, but I do know that the ordinance was passed, and then the board of trustees repealed that ordinance, so it is no longer in place. You can still do a preliminary final with certain criteria, but yeah.
And what I heard you say, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
We don't need to be looking, nor does the applicant, I'm just saying. But let's go back to what really, if it just said, if there was just a basic diagram that said sketch plan, and then plat, PUD, and then.
X, Y, Z after.
The segregation regarding the, like we said, home place ranch, how that's working, and then the other segregation in relation to commercial business or subsidies across the board that are in, like you mentioned, just small entities. I mean, there's a delineation there, but I think that, that delineation and just a diagram may become the issue.
But PUD can come before plat.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. And they're two separate, they can be simultaneously, they can be one before the other. Yeah, you just have to have them both before you can get a permit. So let us, let us think about how we could incorporate that into this next steps. There, as you know, there was, previously there was this entitlement slide that we agreed was pretty. It's cumbersome for what, a presentation? It's all this wording over here that you can't read, and then there's just these three little green boxes. I think it's better if we say, you know, annexation and then a date that it was done, you know, something along those lines specific.
Yeah, and maybe what I suggested just said it aside because I, I think, now that I think, if we get a sketch plan, if you then tell us what the next possibilities are, what comes next.
Yeah.
And, and the reason I think that, that'll help, it then gives us, it makes sure that when we sit here, we're looking at the right things when we come to, when that, when that portion comes to us, we're looking at the right things to say we agree or disagree with.
Right. I agree, okay.
Because I, I don't think we're always looking at the right things at the right time. And then we look at the right things too late.
Yeah.
And.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Nope, that makes sense. All right, I'm going to jump ahead again. So the next thing is referral agency comments. Now, what I want to make clear is when you're looking at something, the referral agency comments should be all resolved. But in the code, it does say that you should be made aware of them. So what we're thinking is within the referral agency comments section, we're going to say who it was sent to, what they said, if it's really long, we're going to summarize it, again, executive summary. But just to let you know who all received it, what their concerns were, and just know that the concerns will have or should have been addressed by the time you see it. Because we're not scheduling anything for you until staff is happy, referral agencies are happy, and then you're going to get the eyes on it then. So this section, if you see something in here and it looks like it's not addressed, we're going to try to be diligent in our wording to say this was addressed X, Y, Z, however we did it. But I do think it's important that you see the issues that the agencies raised and that we looked at when we were looking at the app, the application.
I have a question about the referral agencies. Do, is the homeowners association still a referral agency? And if they're a lobbying group really as opposed to say El Paso County, do you get the same one?
I'm not, I, I haven't seen the referral list. I think the HOAs are listed as those, and we just have to find out who they are.
The, I'm sorry, the home builders.
Oh, home builders? No, the HBA, oh, I know what you're saying, HBA. The HBA is not listed as a referral agency. The HBA, we only involve the HBA if we're doing code updates, changes to fees, anything that applies across the board, but not project specific. But HOAs, I believe are listed, HOAs are listed as a referral, but I don't know if we have the full list of them. I know Teresa had been working on one, but yeah, the HOA list. Okay.
I'm going to show my arguments here, it's mostly what you talked about, it's way out of my head. How, how often do you go back to these documents? Is it on a frequent basis?
Which documents?
Of what we're going over.
The staff report? So the staff report, actually for me, is very helpful when I'm doing historical research on a project. And what has been my frustration is I'm going back to a staff report and all the information isn't there. Like I'm going, do we charge school fees? Did they dedicate land? I don't know. So that's my end goal with the staff report, is to make it that historical record of a project, that one go-to place, so you can get the summary and find out the information.
Well, the reason I ask, once again, I know nothing about this.
You're doing great, man. Doing great.
This may be more cosmetic, but when you brought up concerns or comments that are positive toward the project, maybe you highlight something green and red or yellow or whatever. That way you don't have to read through the whole thing, you can flip it and go, oh, boom, there it is. Oh, there's a concerns on page five, I don't have to read through the whole report on.
Okay.
Quick question on referral. Everything that's mentioned in there, you got the monument PD, monument fire department, the PD sanitation, C dot El Paso.
There's more, but.
Yeah, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, I mean, I get it. They're all municipality entities, state entities, county entities. What referral agency is dealing with traffic inside our town?
Our engineering review. So Jacobs has a traffic engineer who does our traffic engineering, or our traffic review.
I, I just want to make sure that with that referral agency that's speaking on behalf of the town, that's saying, here's the hominist dominus, is placed inside there, simply because again, what we, what we've seen previously is some of the entities that were reporting directly on the traffic were entities that were purchased by the contract or the builder that was saying, yes, this is what it was. Well, if it wasn't for the bonding aspect of saying, okay, before you build X, this is what needs to be done, where's the bond? And it stipulated a lot of restrictions on behalf of the builder to put the bond up first before they were able to continue on with certain entities. But, go ahead.
So typically what happens with the traffic report, you'll have a consulting firm draft the traffic report. They submit it to us, we give it to Jacobs, who are the traffic engineers, experts. They review it, they redline it, they agree or disagree, they send it back and say, we don't agree with your methodology, we don't agree with your numbers. There's a back and forth until that traffic report or traffic letter or whatever it is, is to a point where our traffic engineers agree with the terms, and that's when that traffic report becomes the final document.
It, it's just, it becomes very contentious, as you already see. I mean, everything that's on the Jackson Creek Parkway, and again, just want to make sure that, I mean, that's really, if I, I'm looking at the referral agencies, I put, what are our top three things that we're always contemptually looking at? And I would say traffic is always going to be number one, safety is number two, council member Ken. Kimble, you know, the fire mitigation. I mean, things that are going to be of value. El Paso County don't really care what they have to say at this point, because again, even if it's annexation, it's bringing something into an entity that we're going to have to control. The historical aspect may bring some interest.
So we have that section earlier where we're going to take the traffic and we're going to go into detail there. So I think that will address it. I think, for instance, like with the C dot or El Paso County, if it's one of their roads, you're going to see that they're going to say, no, you can't have access, even though somebody wants you to have a ride in, ride out. So I think those are important in the referral agency part, but as far as the traffic as it relates to our review of it, that would be earlier in the staff report where we take and really highlight the executive summary of the traffic.
I just want to make sure that within that referral agency aspect, it's not trivial. It's not just, let's, let's put something in there that is, again, trivial, not necessarily bring in equity towards the decision that we're going to make for our report.
So I think what we would say, like if C dot had no comment, what we're going to do is summarize the following agencies had no comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Instead of listing a bunch of stuff. And if it, if it's of no significance, again, we'll say little to any comments. But if they have something, like if C dot said, we don't agree with the signalized intersection, we're going to require, you know, the escrow funds for a future signal or something like that, we're going to put that in the agency comment so you know where it came from and how it impacts it.
Thank you.
Is this a bad time to bring up water? You have to let me know if I'm jumping.
As far as, oh, you want that to be a highlighted section?
Well, I understand that right now, and I think for a long time, we've just relied on the water department gave a will serve letter. And I know that, you know, we used to require Bruce Lidle to look at every, every case and see if they had enough water.
And he still does, yes. I, I don't know that it's every application, but I, I still see stuff coming in from him, yes.
A little bit more information would be nice.
Okay.
Maybe how many taps they have.
Okay. Yep, we'll, we'll add the water section to that one, and if there's really significant information. For instance, like the beacon light annexation, we would have addressed, they have an existing well, they're going to deed it over to us, they can still use it. You know, kind of go into detail on that, so we can do that. I don't know that we'll get a lot of detail if it's not Monument Water.
That's okay.
But we'll, we'll put whatever we can, okay.
We can't control it anyway.
Right, okay. So the next thing we're going to add in, I think this is in there, but just to be, it's probably going to be the same on every single one, but just in a notice that we did meet the public notice requirements. We put it in the paper, we posted the property, and we mailed it within 500 feet 15 days prior. So that will probably be standard language within each one, but we think it's important to have it in as part of the record.
To protect you, I was just going to say that, to protect you, you may in your staff report want to say available in the file or.
Okay.
Whatever. No, I don't think we care, but anybody who reads it then knows there's, there's proof somewhere.
So now we're to the planning commission. So this is typically how it's been, is the date, and then, and previously what I saw was just the planning commission recommended approval. So I think what we'd like to do is say, you did recommend approval, but put the actual motion in there. And then here's where I was talking about, do we want to cut and paste minutes in? It sounds like universally, let's go ahead and put the minutes in. We're going to do our best to make sure they're very reflective. Hopefully, most of the time we'll be able to look at them again, but we'll cut and paste the minutes into this section. Start with the motion and then start with the minutes so they can go into further detail.
And that would be further moved up towards the front of.
And you still want to move that? Well, as soon as we get done with this, let's go back up to the top and find out where we want to put it.
Yes, ma'am.
So then we go staff recommendation, the recommended motion, and then the alternative motions.
Hey, I, I don't want this to sound snarky, but I, I don't think I've ever, I've only been doing it for a year. So 24 projects or so have come in front of us, and not once have we seen a project that the staff recommended denial. So I mean, right now, I mean, projects are 24-0, and I, I just, I just wondered what your thoughts were.
So I think staff can recommend denial. If we, our goal is to get it to you into something that we can support. But if us and a developer are still hitting heads and they insist on coming, then we'll bring it to you and say, we recommend denial because it doesn't meet this. Or even if they come in for a zoning, let's say they wanted to come in for a light industrial zoning, we don't think it's a good fit. It's their option to bring it to you, it's our recommendation that it's going to be, we're going to recommend denial. So I think it's, most of the time, we're trying to do all the work ahead of time so that we get to a point where we feel like there's some type of agreement, rather than having them bring something to you that we can't support at all. Like something that we feel like is a good negotiation between the two, meeting the middle ground. That's a good win for the town, may not be 100%, but at least there's been some negotiation. So I think that's staff is what we're going to be doing, is trying to get it to you in the best possible way. But if we still can't, then yeah, we would bring something that's a denial.
And that, I think that's the way we want it. I think the great thing about getting the new staff and having this clean start is that they're going to work for what's best for the town, and they should not be bringing us anything until it's pretty much 100% there. There will occasionally be a developer who says, I don't care what you say, you know, I'm taking that to the commission. But things should come to us pretty well tied up and ready to go. We're still going to ask questions that I think this planning commission, I think we have to do, we've had to do. I mean, we've had in the past, we've had to do too much work.
Okay. And I think there are going to be times when we've hit that point where we feel like we've negotiated all we can, and then it's the planning commission's job to negotiate further.
Well, and that's, that's what I wanted to say. With the exception of, you know what I've got exception to. I believe that the planning department does work real hard to work with the developers to only bring forward projects. But I think there are limits to what you can do when you're negotiating with them because the developer wants this and you're saying. But it's not an issue that is significant enough at your level to say, well, we're, we're going to recommend denial. I mean, we wouldn't have developed. I mean, we wouldn't have developers coming if you did that every time you had a question. Since I've been on here, we, the planning commission, denied. We denied one about a year, couple, a year and a half or so ago, two years ago maybe. It went to trustees and the trustees said, you all come back and work it out with the planning department and bring it back to us. So what she's saying, I believe, is very correct. She comes up, they come up and they recommend approval of something. They're doing it based on all the ordinances, based on everything, but there may be issues that they're probably hoping we could discover and that we call into question. And that's why we have the opportunity and when we get down talking about the comprehensive plan, because I put a lot of emphasis on the comprehensive plan, as you know. But when it then comes to us, we can put a condition there. And my position has always been since I've been on the planning commission, if we put a reasonable condition, it doesn't mean that the council or the trustees are going to agree with this. But trustees, council members have questions too and it certainly helps them if we put a proper condition, not just arbitrary condition, but a proper condition on it for them to discuss and decide because they have the right to do things you don't have the right to do. And certainly, we have no right to deny anything, but they can do all kinds of things within legal that go beyond what's in those ordinances, if that makes sense.
No, it does because as staff, you know, that is our job is to go by the black and white that's within it. And I think I always tell people that the magic of planning happens in the gray where the ordinance may say one thing, but there's a little bit of wiggle room where you can negotiate. So we would like the sidewalk, it's off-site, it's an off-site improvement, but if you do that sidewalk, we'll reduce your sidewalk commitments over here because this is an important connection to a school. So we can make those trade-offs and then when it comes to you, we explain that, but then you might be able to get the other sidewalk back. You know, there are different things that we can do as a team, but yes, we're going to negotiate to get it to where we think this is the best that we can do. And maybe in some cases, it's the best overall, but that's where you come in to look at it. And sometimes you have the history that we couldn't find in a staff report, we couldn't find elsewhere that you can bring to light that we didn't know about, so.
Sometimes they'll actually work with us when we call something into question, they'll actually seen them work with us and say, we don't have a problem with that, we'll do that. Had it not been brought up by us.
Right.
It would have gone to the trustees and it may have very well been approved.
And a lot of us, this is learning curves for us to, as well, to learn what are the priorities and the important things to the planning commission, the council, so that when we're reviewing, we know what to ask for. So that's where we're getting guidance from you. We're learning as we go to meetings, we're listening to the citizens, we're listening to the council people so we know what we should be asking for, besides just the black and white on the pages.
I'm sure, please, we have you.
So this is, that's it. So I'm going to go back up to the top real quick so we can talk about where we want to put the planning commission recommendation. So this is the top of it. We have the project summary, the attachments, and then we have just the mapping issues, the vicinity map, zoning and land use, and then the comprehensive plan. And then we jump into, stop it, sorry.
Why couldn't it go on your staff recommendation?
Well, I think what they're talking about is the planning commission part. You want the overall planning commission piece higher in the report, not tucked in at the end.
Correct.
So do you want it before review criteria? You want it after review criteria?
I would put it right in front of, because that way they know what we, as a board or as the planning commission, we literally said, these are the things, review criteria and everything else, but again, here's what we came out with and why. And then they can go look at all the, everything else because, again, there's no question as to what we done or why we did what we did.
Okay.
If we go on the back end, which is where it's lied so long, is that, I mean, they already get to make the pre notion of, well, this is what I would do. Now, if it's contrary to what they believe to be true, they're already going to make that decision.
Okay.
Would those minutes include rationale when we make a condition?
I will say yes if those, if you say those as part of the actual meeting. Like I said, the issue with the one prior was it was an attachment to the minutes and I totally forgot about it. So what we need to make sure is that you read that rationale is included in our minutes and not as an attachment.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. That's significant because we can put a condition on it, but why did they put the commission, the condition on it? That's the big thing.
Yeah. Okay.
I would put it right under project summary.
Correct.
So you want it moved up even further?
Yes, ma'am. Correct. I would even put it before attachments. I mean, because again, everything is right there in the front.
I think that's a town clerk one, we may. But maybe if I put that in the menu, okay, I'm going to put it up here, I'll run it by her, if not, it'll go after that.
Okay.
Best case is here, if not, it would go. There. That work?
Worse.
Okay.
Run that down a little bit more so I can see what's coming before that.
Oh, sorry. You want to see what's before it?
Yeah, please.
It's the summary.
It's just the quick summary, the who, what, when, where in a table format and two to three sentences.
Well, I got sort of disagree with putting that planning commission motion minutes there. What you're doing up front here is telling the community and the council.
Just the facts, man.
Here's what's before you. To me, the planning commission's motion minutes and rationale would come immediately after your recommendation to approve.
Well, that's where it was, but you guys want to move it.
I'm just saying.
I'll let you guys argue that out.
But I would say that the problem that we run into is, I agree, but just like she had already mentioned, everything that's coming up has already been, the groundwork is done. The narrative is here that's saying, okay, this is everything that's come up, here's all the variables that we've seen in order to make a decision. As this goes up to the council, literally what's being missed, as we had mentioned, is everything is being stacked up on top of it. So now we're on the bottom as far as the narrative on how we presented or how we came to our conclusion. I see what you're saying, well, if we put it up front, we're already telling them what we did, yes, but that's ideally what we're still looking for is to get all the chaff out of it, tell them this is what we did. Now, they can read everything, but I think what's happened, just as we mentioned when we began an hour ago, was that it is forward and it's telling exactly what we done in our process of our meeting.
The only, the only point I'd make is we can come up with a condition for something, but they don't, may not really know what the project is and why that condition is on there. I.
But I can see, like, if you put the planning commission stuff up front, they read that and they're like, why would they make that condition? And then that maybe drives them to read.
Exactly.
A little more, so I can see.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you basically are the driver's seat of what you think is important.
God, I agree with you.
All right, so this will be, this is the format we're going to try to use moving forward, not try, but we will. We're going to try to establish, take our time to establish these type of staff reports for all of our cases. And like I said, the reason I wanted to do the town council one was so that we could have this discussion about what is going to them, which seems to be pretty important to you guys. So yours will be the exact same, except you won't have the planning commission recommendation in that place. You'll just, you'll have the standard format with staff recommendation at the bottom.
Perfect.
Typically, how long are the minutes? Are we talking pages?
Well, that's, we're going to talk about that later too because we want to provide detail, but we don't want to have it a transcript, so we'll go into that. And we've had direction from the town clerk's office and how they do them and which may, we may have a town clerk assigned to this committee, commission. And so then we will be bound by what they do. So that's a discussion we're going to have in a little bit.
Great.
Okay. All right, well, I'm done. For the moment, that's true, I do have some work. So I'm going to save that and then I'm going to stop sharing and let Luke take it on and he's done a really good job of working on, what are you doing first? Oh, the presentation, okay.
Yeah. Okay. So this is an example, any of this information in here, don't read it as if it's a real project, we've kind of just added in words to fill in. And there it went, okay. Just to fill out the presentation. So I changed the cover slide and then moved on to project context. So this is going to be in the same order as the staff report so that as you're looking at the presentation and the staff report is in front of you, you can, yeah.
This was a question you had about the, I want to remember, the green line.
Yes.
So talk us through on, because this is what we want to use in the staff, like I said, we want to make them interchangeable, so give us your thoughts on this.
It is.
Don't know if it's more work, topographical or topographically, can that be depleted in this? That way, when we start talking water runoff, when we start talking holding ponds, when we start talking.
So until we have an internal GIS up and running, we are hoping to hire a GIS person this year, but until then, we're going to be working off Google Maps and so I don't know if we can overlay, but hopefully, like when we get the GIS person, we'll be able to create the maps that we want based on that.
Sure.
But.
Okay.
So it may be down the road, but we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
All right, and then the next slide would be the actual PUD or plat. That's not been included in past presentations.
But we do like to have it so that if you want to go back and reference, like if you have an issue with a cul-de-sac in one area, that way we at least have it to go back to. I know it's hard to read, but if there is a specific question, like I know for Home Place Ranch, it was like, where is the roadway we're concerned about? We want to be able to bring it up visually for you, the audience or anyone else who's in there. Well, this is a presentation that actually going, you're going to be sitting through and seeing it. So it may be something that we look at and we show you and then 10 slides down, we have to come back up to it because there's a question about a sidewalk placement or something. It's really just to have a visual.
Is this the same presentation that you send up ahead of the meeting then?
Uh, yes.
And it'll be in a PDF format?
Yes.
Okay, then we can manipulate it ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah. So yes, you do get the presentations, is it the day before, the week, day before usually?
Day or two before.
Yeah. And so you would have a chance to look at them before you actually, we actually present them to the public and at the meeting.
All right, and then the next slide is existing zoning with existing, with the zoning map as well as adjacent property zoning.
I thank you for adding the site to it, it's really helpful. I just, I wrote the comment on your land uses. Some of the things we looked at on Beacon Light had this graphic and to the east, it would just say, you know, El Paso County School, whatever. You ought to add I-25 in there because it's such a leap if you're on Beacon Light to go all the way over to the high school. There's a 500-foot right of way there.
Okay.
All right, and then this next one, this is one we're still a little iffy on because there's so much, so many words, but this just outweighs the, outlines the project history, which is also in the staff report.
Yeah, and I think this leads up to what you had said about next steps, at least you know what annexation, maybe it's just seriously annexed in 2016, final plat and this year preliminary plat, rather than so much wording.
I like this.
Yeah.
And there's the same thing continued. And then we have the comprehensive plan with the policies outlined, but we didn't add justification for those because it's so much wording. And if, again, you have a question as to why we think this works with it, that's something that you guys wanted in the staff report too?
They just wanted. If we were going to add the justification, we were more specific as to why rather than making it a stretch.
If I can ask real quick, Luke, go back to five. With five and six, those little markers there, are those depleting time duration or is that depleting just a marker of text?
So you're the second person that's asked that, so I need to change it. No, it's just, it's just a list.
And I think, I think it would be great if it was a time depletion because that way we can see how long one, this thing has been in the queue, how long it has been established. You know, just as we talked when Jacobson was here, when they were doing the presentation stuff, they made a comment that, oh yeah, we've already seen, what was it, the annexation of the flag annexation of the north, and they had already seen some documents and we were like, what are you talking about? We've never even seen this stuff. So it'd be interesting just to see, not only from the delineation of time, what has transpired, but exactly how is the disparity of time in relation to the project? And how is that, you know, so that way we're not blinded by what Jacobson done that with that, by holding on to the information, but we as a commission saw nothing of that stuff. Yeah. So I, just a suggestion, I mean, I don't know if it's going to be fluid in relation to the other projects, but that one just stuck out in my mind in relation, well, as to, it might be of importance.
So you want to pop out the dates and make them much more.
Or even a month and a year. I mean, hey, this is, we got this one, this is the project history, we got this, we got this, we got this, got it. You know, because again, the first question, if it's one of those that has been an annexation and it was those flag lots up to the north or the west side of I-25. Yes, ma'am. I mean, that one was interesting because again, when it came to, oh yeah, we already have that stuff, well, where is it? You know, and it was interesting because it was there, but we had no information at all associated with it. I would be interested to know when that project even started. Yeah, so just, just a sideline, I don't know that that's going to work with some of the projects, but that one just sort of sticks out.
Okay. Yeah, I can try it at the next one if y'all hate it, just let me know.
Yeah.
Work in progress.
Sorry, set yourself up, man.
Oh, I'm not, I'm, these are, this is the, this is the color scheme that we've been using, I don't know why it's blue and yellow.
Yeah.
So you don't like, it's a little hard to see?
Oh, this.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I can change that. I didn't want to use, I tried to use a color that was not on the map, but looks like every color is on the map. Yeah.
All right, we'll work on that.
I can change that. Okay, and then.
So this was one we talked about internally as well as, I hate this slide, but I also part of being likes and having it be part of the record again, that we put it before you, that these are the review criteria. We're not going to read them, we don't expect you or the public to read them. So my goal was to just ask the town attorney, is there any benefit to including this in the presentation if we've already included it in the staff report? If he says no, then we're not going to include the criteria in the actual presentation. If he says we should, then it's going to be this kind of slide every time, you can't read it, we're just going to say, these are the criteria that we used. So we just wanted to throw that out there.
Quick, I guess, comment then, if we keep this slide and there is a narrative aspect that you have in relation. that you have in relation, as we talked about again on two, let's see, criteria review, the variety, uh, let's say, let's look at number four, the variety of development, housing types and styles, and dest, uh, densities are proposed, mixed land use are, is encouraged. You say it's, your review criteria says yes, and you think that, you know, it's still borderline, but you said yes. I mean, is there some way, if we do use this slide, that you can highlight that as a, I don't know, in color number four, you put a yellow mark on that thing?
Okay.
So that way we can come back and we know, okay, yeah, hey, what does this mean? I mean, you're talking about density, is there a density aspect of this? What was, I wouldn't say it like...
What made us question it?
Exactly.
Okay.
That would be the main thing, I mean, somehow give us indicators of what, when you looked at that review criteria, the subjectivity of it, what specifically were you looking at that made the, it passed the test, but still there was a, wait a minute.
Right.
You know, we can't...
Here's the area we negotiated the most on.
Exactly. Yes, ma'am.
All right. And then everything else was more like a black and white?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, because density now becomes the, okay, what does town council consider density that we can have the conversation about? But I think realistically, if we don't have something like that, where we know this is what it is, and we know what you're measuring it off of, I mean, we're never gonna see eye to eye in relation to what is appropriate, I guess.
Yeah, like, that's good.
But as a rule, wouldn't that have been a proper discussion in the preliminary PUD?
As a rule on this one, yes.
See, that's, that's why I get concerned about preliminary and final PUD, because there's things that we can call into question on a preliminary PUD.
If it's a combo, you can still call it into question, because we use both.
You can call it into question, but it's certainly hard to make a major issue out of it when the...
But that's the risk they take.
Advocate has put in tons of money, and they're sitting in front of the council, and they're pounding their fist, and now the council's gotta make a decision, so are we gonna deny this? And they, they come in and wanna sue us.
But, but I think though, too, is that, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Luke, the, the preliminary's gonna be replacing the final if and case it's that set, correct?
If it's a combo, it's both.
Yeah, correct, but in this case, as, as Danny's saying, I mean, right now, if it were just a preliminary, it, we wouldn't even have this final slide, that'd be the same.
Exactly, yeah.
That's right. And the, and we could've talked about the density and those things, and that's where, even though we may have agreed with the density and everything else in the sketch plan, when we get to the preliminary, we may say, we got a problem because of all the other development that has been approved subsequent, subsequent to you putting this in. It doesn't work well when we got the combo.
Yeah, so, like, whatever this presentation would be about, the review criteria for that project would be in there. So if it was a preliminary with the final, you would see more criteria.
I mean, we could, we could still call it into question, I'm just saying, so...
Yeah.
When you get to the final...
You're saying you're not a fan of a preliminary final combo?
Yeah. I don't like preliminary final combo on significant projects.
Right, yes.
Good job. Good break.
All right, moving on, so this is, we're gonna get into the, like, specific parts, which again, should be in the same order as the staff report. So traffic, instead of a bunch of words like it was last time, just bulleted the big points. There's a traffic study like this.
Don't expect them to all be that pretty, cuz if I have to do one, it's...
And then like Sheila outlined, we're gonna talk about every sort of part, drainage, utilities.
Wait, can we go back, go back to traffic, I'm sorry? Within this, and go to the next one? Right here, we're looking at trips, weekends, traffic study, I mean, obviously, there's a format, or you're designing a format to identify the long-term information that we have that is in that traffic study. Within the slide itself, is there a way to capture from, and this was the one we were talking about about a year ago, the stages of that traffic? Here's what I'm asking, is that as we go into plat seven, there's gonna be entry coming in from Higbee, there's gonna be entry coming in from Jackson, or, not Jackson Creek, Glen Eagle?
Glen Eagle.
Yeah. Those two venues are gonna go into seven and eight, but by stage of construction with traffic, there is gonna be industrial movers, there's gonna be, there's earth movers up there now, there's semis bringing in partitions for houses. All of these things are gonna mitigate, or all of these things are gonna cause problems for the community. Those impacts are one of the things that, again, we continually, I mean, that's what most of the people are coming here for, they're saying, hey, in the end, they don't care that the houses are going up, they see the value, they understand that, but they don't, their impact of the building this stuff is what is causing the problem. They can't get their kids to school, they can't do all the other things that they normally do now, because now they're impeded by all the other variables. Within that traffic study, I guess my question is, is there a way to look at that traffic study? The traffic guy does what he does. However, I would go even further to that traffic study and say, okay, let's look at it by the first 90 days, how is that gonna impact, what is your projected amount of trucks that you're gonna bring in individual? Then halfway through the project, what are you gonna be bringing in? By the end, this is what it's gonna be, either a three-stage approach, or something that's gonna delineate to the public, where we're not just saying, hey, there's a problem, go talk to that guy. No, this is the plan, and this is how we're setting it up, so that way you can see, yeah, for the, for the winter months of, or let's say the fall months of August through November, yeah, we're gonna be meeting some traffic. You have to deal with that right now, and here's why.
Yeah, so the, the traffic studies typically don't do that, unless they, like, let's say with Whataburger, there was a request to have them do a traffic mitigation for opening, grand opening, because of, you know, how they're gonna stand through it. Most of the time, your traffic is just what it is today, what it's gonna be in the future, and then you might get something in the middle, like with phase one and phase two.
Sure.
There's no right turn lane required, but by the time you get to phase three, you have to add that. So that part we can add, but the construction part, that's not typically addressed in a traffic study.
And I, I would, I would definitely, I, I can't say, well, we should have it, because again, I understand there's still inherent cost with that, but I, I think that, I mean, that would be something to consider, because again, we still remain the speed bump for the public in relation to, well, you said it would be done. And then when they ask, you know, we're walking through King Supers, and they're like, well, why'd you approve that? Well, I, I, trust me, we brought it up, but again, there's no, we still become the speed bump.
Yeah.
You as a planning ordinance still become the speed bump, there's no solution, so there's no value. And that's my question, is how do we create that value to give them all that information? Mom driving that, that little van, taking her kids to school, well, she's gonna wanna know, what time do I need to be cautious of walking through this area?
Construction, it's gonna be in a construction plan.
Sure.
Is a part of that phasing, it's done by that general contractor or developer? Sounds like what you're asking is if they would provide a traffic management plan that would be a part of that phasing that they have to do.
Yeah.
That would play out post-approval of this process.
Yeah, those are usually done, not necessarily by the developer, but by the construction group. So the construction group has to do the construction management, traffic management plan. So even like along Jackson Creek Parkway, you have the design of the plan, but the actual coning off and timelines of that are typically by the construction group, because they know where they're gonna be when and how that goes. So it's, we can, we can look and see how much information we can provide, and maybe have, see if the traffic study could include some recommendations.
And I, you know, that's all I'm asking, because I think that's gonna give that slide more value, other than saying, hey, this is trips by week, yeah, I get it, you know what I mean?
Most of the time, it's, like, how much, how much business, how much traffic is this use generating? And what is the impact to the road, and how is that being mitigated? Is it because, are they adding another lane? Are they adding a signal? Are they adding a stop sign? That's what your traffic studies are telling you.
Sure, but I mean, let's, let's throw the traffic study into Palmer Lake when they're playing football during the fall season. Or when the school, the high school here, same thing on Jackson Creek Parkway, that's gonna cause a major factor.
And that's part of what they should be looking at.
Should be, but again, we have no variable that's saying, you know, let's, let's put these levers in place now, as we go forth, to say, hey, the traffic study is telling me this. That's the first question in my mind, is, wait a minute, they're doing this during August, I know September, October, they're gonna be going into football season, how is that gonna affect those people there at the, on Jackson Creek Parkway?
Yeah, and they'll argue that we took that into consideration during our traffic study, and it's a one-time thing, therefore it doesn't warrant.
Do you scan the traffic study and put it in our packet?
I mean, we don't, we don't scan it, they provide us everything digitally, but...
That would be really nice, I mean, scanning, scanning, if it's not too hard.
It's all digital, we can just attach it, it just knows sometimes they're 300 pages long.
Well, I don't...
We can do executive summaries, we can do, we can, we can take out the tables.
Traffic study has an executive summary.
That's what I'm saying, we could do something like that, it depends on what you want, we can do the executive summary, take out some of the tables, turn in, include some of the graphics where it shows, like the turning movements, so you can see some of that, so we can do that if you want.
Yes, there are obviously some very technical-minded people on this commission, and I appreciate that, cuz I don't wanna read it.
Well, and, and I think that the two things that the public comes out here and complains about the most is traffic and water.
Yeah.
And they've never, the commission's never been given detail of any significance on the traffic, so they don't get any, if, if there was, maybe your summary would do it, I, I think people wanna know how well, and we wanna know, how well was the traffic looked at?
Okay.
And, and we've not been privy to that before, except this traffic study says it's A-OK.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, I will say, this information that I plugged in here, I did not get straight from a traffic study, I got straight from the slides from the previous presentation, so I didn't even look at the traffic.
No, no, you're, you're a good messenger, Luke.
I think if they're, like, I could create some sort of timeline, if that is provided in the traffic study, or more, whatever additional comments we ask for, I can include that in the slide as well.
I would say, just in relation to the, my, my personal preference would be in relation to the project, how is it gonna affect us now by midterm and by the conclusion? What do I, what do we gain out of this? What does the public gain out of this project? And again, this way they see a clear picture or understanding that has been presented overall to allow them to see it, understand it, whether or not they like it, that's a whole other problem, but at least they know what we're looking at when we make that decision.
Okay.
And, and, and I, and I would suggest that when you're working with the developer, that you recommend that when they make presentations to this commission, that when it comes time to traffic, that they talk these issues on how they're, they're doing it. Because I think the public wants to hear, we wanna hear, and they don't always do that. It, I, I think what's been missing in some cases, and why we get so much complaint from the public sometimes, is there, there's just no definition to the people on what's gonna happen. And, and I'll give you an example, what's going on at Jackson Creek up on the filing number one.
Yep.
Yeah, filing one, where they're gonna put in a right turn lane before certain things are done on that roadway. The developer came in, and the presentation was made, but they didn't have a map, they didn't show the detail, they didn't talk to that, that we were loaded with public, and they didn't talk to that. And had they have talked to that very clearly, and after we put them on point a number of times, we put them on point, they talked to it, but there was still no map there, they didn't include a map in their presentation, that they could clearly point out, public, here's what's, here's what's gonna hap... I think if people understand what's gonna happen, sometimes they quit complaining, but they're sitting here upset because they don't understand what's gonna happen.
So can you eliminate some of that by giving them a template ahead of time, and saying, Mr. Developer is a commission, this is what we wanna see from you in the meeting? And maybe you already do that, once again, maybe I'm speaking out of time, but force feed them a little bit, so they don't forget something, they have no excuse, you've told them, these are the items, this is the format. Format developer A is the same as B, it's a standardized format, and then they have no excuse for dropping the ball.
Well, the, whatever, something, but I, I think the developer, the presentation that comes before us and the public at the same time should be sufficient to answer some of the questions that we know, and they should know that we're going to have, and they just...
So what I'm gathering is, we want presentations from the applicant, and we want them to go into a little more detail, even if we as staff don't. And maybe, you're right, maybe we give them, like, here are the five bullet points we want you to address, and we can base it off, like, things that we know you're interested in, things that we know that you would want to hear.
Yeah.
And they would have the graphics that we don't.
And possibly things that you know that the council will be interested in.
Okay.
Because, like you're saying, I, I think we've got a great community, a lot of people, and they just want clarity on what's gonna happen, and they wanna make sure what's gonna happen is not gonna have them a detrimental impact on their life. And the point that he made out is, all this traffic, while we're trying to get these things in place, at certain times of the year, becomes a serious problem for our people.
Well, I think though, too, is the bonding, I mean, one of the, one of the things that we brought out of that last meeting, and even talking to Mr. Foreman, was, hey, was the bonding in place for this? Do you have the secondary bonding? And just the public being able to hear that, I mean, that, that's, that's the value, that's, and I keep saying that, but I mean, realistically, that's the part that the public walked out of here, like, oh, they already got the money ready to go, that's 2.6 million that is already allocated for that pro... Okay, good, you know, we, we can't do anything about that.
Right.
It's already established, but again, it takes that burden of us off, the public, it takes the burden off of you, hey, yeah, guys, it's already in the notes, here's everything that you need to know.
Yep.
So.
Yeah.
Perfect, great job, Luke.
We'll just, I think we'll just need to be specific about what we want the developers to present, rather than us, so that we don't have to repeat.
Right, so we're not providing duplicate information, maybe ours in some areas is more summarized, and we say, the developer has more information for you on this later. Basically, the graphics, the numbers, but I do want us to give you as much information as we can, but they maybe go into a little more detail, but we do want them to present, and we'll give them some guidance on what we think they really need to hit on.
No.
Well, but I, I would, I would even, I would even say, the other side of that coin is, stay away from it, just let them do what they need to do, because again, realistically, we'll catch it. I mean, we're, we're all very good at already seeing and understanding what the, the precursors are to the questions, but I think that with what you're giving us, we're, I think we'll be fine, I think if you give them the precursor, and then they come back, and we didn't even ask it, but they presented this, and they're looking at you like, well, what are you talking about?
But we do need to have them be ready, I mean, if...
Oh, no, no, but I, I think they've been prepared, but again, behind the scenes, I, I just wanna, I, I would say caution, not only, we're gonna see the package, we're gonna come up with our own understanding of, okay, this is what I wanna talk about. But I think though, if we give them the lead, this guy, all, all Commissioner Trujillo does is focus on traffic, get ready, you know? Then they're gonna be like, oh, well, here we go, this guy's gonna be, we better have all X, Y, and Z, it's almost like we're giving them the report card, no, let them do the work. We'll ask them, but they, now you're gonna have to discuss it with what the public has to offer. Yeah.
There's a historian on here, let me, no, I, I'll tell you what I think's happened. When I first come on, it was basically, they didn't wanna hear from the planning department, didn't wanna hear from the planning department. Just to prove, we've looked at it and everything, we had a terrible time getting to the point that we were, we have the kind of discussions that we currently have, okay, and we have some very good productive discussions, and I don't think we're unreasonable people, but I think a few developers that have repeated activity got in the format to... But I think a few developers that have repeated activity got in the format that, hey, all we got to do is make a little simple presentation, it's going to be approved, we're going to go forward. Well, as long as we got the planning commission we've got now, ain't going to happen. And I think they need to understand that, that we need a little more detail. Because I do think, I've said this many times, and I'll say it again, I think the planning commission is the voice of the public. All the public can't be out there, and if you read the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan puts the burden on us to make sure that what the public has said in the comprehensive plan that they're interested in, that it's looked at, and it's looked at very carefully, and if it's not taken care of, we speak up, and then the council can make the decision on whether our speak up is greater than what you've had to do and what the developers saying. But I think some people got accustomed to that. And that started changing when, not the previous, but the previous, previous director came in, things started changing. Okay? And then they went south for a little while, but they're going north again.
North. We're heading north.
All right. Again, none of the words, none of, like, this does not apply to this project, but this is just showing you that we would have a different slide for each item.
Okay.
And if you guys have any ideas for ones you want to see in here, we talked about maybe including wildfire. It just depends on the project really, or what you guys want as well.
Yep, I, I would put anything that deals with the safety of the public in mass, that mass anything, you know, that, if anything that affects the public, like...
Yeah.
Bottom line. Anything that's safe, anything that affects the safety of the public.
All right, and then we have the staff recommendation slide. This was exactly as it was in the past presentation. And then a slide for questions, followed by motions, and that would be it.
And the idea here was, we always ended on questions, but then when it came time for motions, that wasn't before you. So if we put the motions last, when it's time, we can pull that right back up, and then you have it in front of you. Trying to get rid of making paper copies as much, but if you still want paper copies, we can do it, but...
As long as when it comes time to the point that a motion's to be made, something's in front of me, because I don't always get around to running it off before, and if we have four or five projects, I don't want to run them.
Right.
But it, I just want to make sure that I say the right thing on the motion, so if you've got it up there, it's great.
Okay.
Any other comments on the presentation?
Looks good.
Yeah, well, good job, Luke.
Thanks, Luke.
So this will be a work in progress, and as we go along, if you find that maybe the order doesn't work or whatever, just provide us some feedback, and we'll keep tweaking it a little. All right.
Okay, now we're moving on to minutes. This one, I'm just going to share my screen.
Yeah, share your screen, and I'm, like I said, we may be having a town clerk assigned to the planning commission, so therefore we will no longer really be in control of the minutes, and we will be following the same format as the council. But until then, we wanted to give you some ideas, some thoughts, and some input. Doesn't mean we don't have any input if the town clerk does take it over, but I just, I know they have a standardized way they do things. And we are still trying to more closely mirror what the council does as far as minutes, agendas, wording, trying to make it more the same, more the same. I don't know if that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to show you two versions. The first one, I, this is from, it's going to represent from the January 11th meeting. This is exactly the template that we started with, and I just went with it. So as you can see, everything is broken down by project here, comments, I kind of did verbatim what was said, and then the motion is separated here, second, and then the vote. That's how it is for this entire one. However, this is how town council does their minutes. So they do it, and I, again, we don't necessarily have to follow this, but basically every... Yeah, everything is in a single paragraph once we start talking about a project. So it looks similar, and then project one, it's all one paragraph, the motion is out, and then there's the vote. Second project, it's all one paragraph. There's not really a separation between public comment, commissioner comment, applicant rebuttal, it's just all in one.
And is there any difference in the amount of information?
So Tina, who is currently doing the minutes for town council, she does it pretty lengthy. I checked out the last notes. I mean, she even emailed me today asking about certain questions about applicants that spoke, because they didn't include their last name. So she does it pretty lengthy, but she also agrees that it might be easier if we transition to a more, just talk about the action items and any super-specific comments. But again, I don't want to be subjective and, you know, pick and choose comments here and there, so there needs to be a balance, unless there doesn't need to be, and you guys want everything, or if you want, it just really depends on what you guys want.
I think just significant comments are, if, if we don't deny something, or we don't put a condition on something, then I just think significant comments related to questions that we've asked, I think the council wants to know, how well did these people look at that, even though they're approving it? How well did they look at it? But I don't know that they want all the detail, or need all the detail related to that, and if they have questions, they would probably look to you and say, well, what did, what did they, they would expect you to be familiar with what happened in the meeting. But I do think more detail is needed if we deny or we condition, because that becomes a critical thing for them to look at. They've got a motion from you to approve, got a denial, or I'm making either denial or a, a condition from us, and they want to know, because they're using that in their thought process. And if they're subject to that before they come to the meeting, there's a better chance that their discussion will be shorter and more to the point.
So my thinking was, maybe while I'm at the meeting, I kind of do this, I type out everything that was said, and then, because again, like, this was all said before there was even a motion, or like, before I would even know if there was a condition applied to it. So I think if I write all this down, and then, like, tomorrow or the next day, I can go through and pick out the specific action items, but then if one of you guys comes back and said, oh, I said this at the meeting, why is that not in the minutes? I can then put it in there if I need to before we post it out.
Those can be a work in progress, where we kind of come to an agreement of what, but that's why I think it's important that we review the minutes, if possible, before we put them in the council packet.
Yeah.
I think the first one, the show list is a lot easier to look.
Okay, that's, yeah, I agree.
This may be just asking too much, and if it is, forget it. How hard would it be to, after each, or at the beginning of each project or case that we describe in the minutes, you either link to or reference the video? And I don't know if you go back and look at that when you're doing minutes, but if each project could have the minute marker? So if, if council was really interested, and if it was controversial, they wouldn't have to watch an entire meeting, they could go to minute 34 and just get that case.
It's interesting you say that, and, and I'm thinking, who was it? Council member Redmond, when, when apartment buildings came up? And I think it was the applicant had made the comment, well, we never had any discussion of somebody that was, and Commissioner Redmond had literally said, oh yeah, it was on here, and it was in here, and it literally sunk in.
That's when they were calling me into question.
Yeah, it sunk in, because behind the scenes, yeah, he had gone and done the homework in relation to what was said in those minutes. So I think there, yeah, I mean, that brings up a very good point. I mean, when it is, I mean, it might be something to look at, because I agree with Kathy, that's, that's going to be substantial when it goes to that whole apartment complex piece. Oh, there was no, no one was denying it, and I mean, it was, there was a clear delineal, there was a clear history on that, that we said, hey, no, no, you know, and obviously...
And that happened to be the case, where we were looking at preliminary final.
Yeah.
That came together, so I, I understand why the trustees didn't give any more consideration to what we said, because I, I, I just would, if I was a council member, I would have had a hard time, even though I'm the guy that made a big issue of it here at the planning commission, because you, yeah.
Why don't we, we'll try, let's see how mu, how long, how much time, more time that would take to do. I like the idea, and maybe, but we'll run it by the town clerk as well, as far as, is that okay with our minutes, that if we do something like that? How does that affect the public records process? I'm not the town clerk, so I don't know that whole thing, but I think, even if we have an official and an unofficial, like, even if we can't put it in the official, we could have the unofficial where it is tied to it, and that it goes into the council's packet, and they can reference it.
It's going to be tough.
I think there's somewhere we can do it.
It's going to be tough to do, though, because...
We'll see how long it takes.
For example, for example, what happened that we're talking about here, until you have the person representing the developer come up and attack a commissioner, and that's exactly what she did, you don't know what you need to have the history on, other than what that council member, the trustee, had done his research on.
Yeah.
But...
I don't know that we'll be able to, we'll probably just do the beginning of the case, like, it started at minute 30.22, rather than breaking it down like it's a public testimony happened here in this month, but probably just the beginning of the case, and you know, even if the case goes two hours, it's between these two. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was the thinking behind including the time here, but the videos aren't, you know, like, they're not measured by the time of the day. So, and I also heard Drew mention something about a transcription, to where we record these meetings, and there might be able to be a transcription at the end of them, which would save me from having to go back and watch the whole video again and find the right time.
Nothing wrong with this video.
So I will, I, I will see what Drew says. I saw it when Jeff hit record, I just don't know if that's something we have access to or not. Yeah, I, so I will continue to do, I'll just write it down verbatim during the meeting, but then I'll cut it short based on what I think was important, and I'll also talk to Tina, who does the town council minutes, and see, you know, what we think would be best. But regarding format, is everyone fine with it? The motion separated out, the vote separated out?
Right.
Okay, and then you want conditions to be included in the minutes?
No, he's talking about if they make, no, the rationale.
The rationale.
Rational.
And we would have them just say, yeah.
Because the condition will be on the motion.
Yeah, it'll be in the motion, okay.
But rationale for the condition needs to be clearly expressed somewhere, and that would be in the upfront process.
Okay.
Okay, it's me again, and I'm going to make this one go quick. Where is it? So I'm going to throw this out here. These are from our town attorney, we've talked to them. We're going to do a joint town council, planning commission, training session, working with the town manager to bring in, probably Dola, the town attorney, and someone else to come in. So that would be an overall one, but then we want to talk about, like, maybe, maybe not every month, but maybe quarterly, we have a specific topic that we talk about. So instead of planning commission start at six, we start at 5:30, and we talk about workforce housing. Is that something we want to talk about? Is that something we want to address? How could we do that? What, how do you implement it? Kind of an educational piece, but then at the, at the end, or at the beginning, you're like, we don't even want to talk about workforce housing, then we go to the next topic. Legislative updates, if we hear that there's something that might affect the town, we bring those to you. So we could be as specific as that, or it could be something in general, where we were like, hey, let's talk about PUDs, why we like them, why we hate them, you know, all of those. So we can do monthly trainings, we can do quarterly trainings, but here are just a few ideas we threw out that we can think about. If you have one specific that you'd like to do, you shoot it to us, and we try to find either ourselves or someone to come in and do it.
I would ask if we can literally do a quarterly, and in that quarterly, what do we have in the bins right now?
Like an update on...
What do we have?
Cases?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we've talked about doing that with council during those work sessions. One, people who have come to us, even if they haven't submitted, you know, we heard about, you know, a new coffee place coming in.
Yes.
And they're looking maybe in this corner. So until they're, they haven't submitted, we're just talking to them, we can give you an idea, we can get you an update on administrative things. So we're, we're working on an administrative site plan for a coffee place in this area.
Perfect.
So I do think that even though there are some cases that don't come to you, they stay administrative, as a planning commission, you should know what is going on. So if it starts going up, you're like, hey, we didn't look at that, why didn't we know that was going there? We'll keep you up to see. And it may be something that is helpful with GIS maps, once we get a GIS tech, we can include that in your packet, like, here's all the different areas, and where they are is the status as well, so...
Well, I would, I would even look at it from the perspective of what's on hold right now. What's, what are we not seeing in what's out in the next 120 days that I can...
What's in the queue?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah.
No idea. I know you understand it, and, but again, that may have an effect on, you know, the next car wash or next tire shop that goes in right next door to, you know, Big O Tire down the road here. So, I mean, that may be something like, wait, wait, what, what are we doing here? You know, type of thing.
Not that, you can do anything, but...
No, you're absolutely right, but again, it's just getting ahead of that.
Okay. Before one of your meetings. So unlike quarterly, yeah, so maybe for...
That's a little bit of rationale of why this particular work session was first set out using anybody at 5:30.
Yeah, got it.
That was what we were starting to think currently, but I don't know that we necessarily had approached that.
Right.
With you ahead of time, that's why that way out that.
Well, yeah, and the reason that was a concern is because we used to meet at 6:30, and then to satisfy the needs of a planning department, on previous, not previous, previous, we'd come to 6 o'clock, and, you know, people work, and so it's, it's very difficult sometimes to, but I mean, if we agreed to do it, that's fine, but we...
Right, let you know ahead of time.
Yeah.
So if we do these quarterly trainings, and then as part of our packet, we can try to do a good job of, here are discussions we've had, here's in the administrative process, here's things that are in the queue. Maybe it's just a one-page summary that we include in the packet.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll put that on my list.
I will also say that will take some time, because we're still all learning where different projects are at in the queue. Our project, we should see the spreadsheet we have for project tracking right now, it's a mess.
Yeah.
Can understand.
I think for somebody that had to take over the planning department with nobody but her, you're doing an excellent job.
Well, and these guys have taken it on, and that's been great. Okay, so we'll, we'll try to start on that worksheet, and then once a month, you'll get it, and you'll be able to see, well, not once a month, right before every meeting as part of your packet. We'll include it in the packet. I'm getting tired, and you can tell I'm starting to run at the mouth, so I'm going to, that's all I have for training.
Great.
If you have any specific training that you want, just let us know.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Jeff, we got you for home rule, sir.
Yes, you do. Is it, have you all read the Home Rule Charter?
Yes.
Yes, you have, of course you have. So, yeah. Let's see here, show this. You're all on the planning commission, so I'm going to make an assumption that you all, at some point, had a role in the Board of Adjustment, or sat on the, on a BOA at some point.
Not all of them.
Not all of you.
We've got a question about that, because I'm still the chair for the Board of Adjustment. Can I be the chair of both?
Well...
Well, I'm...
Sorry.
You're ju, you're jumping ahead.
Okay, sorry. Sorry.
That's just fine, you can. Let's see, how do I get this to show? So we go.
I can not make you, Ron Egl.
So, in a nutshell... So in a nutshell, the role, the role of the BOA.
Take that.
I gotta show it again? Oh, my goodness. All right. I love that. I love that. I love that. All right, let's do that again. Share. And we're gonna do that guy. Hey, are we, are we live now? Okay, great. Okay, so in a nutshell, Commissioner Trujillo, the BOA is now a part of the planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
According, it's the same thing, uh, according to the rule, the, the Home Rule Charter. Um, and that is the statement of that within Article nine of the Home Rule Charter, making that official. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, for those of you that are not down on it, or on the BOA before, you may be wondering, well, what are these new additional roles that I am playing in this and what are my other additional, um, responsibilities? So powers and duties in terms of the BOA, um, you're dealing with appeals, you're dealing with variances, okay? And so, you know, you're, and this is pulling from code, but this has been abbreviated, abridged as dramatically as I could to make this as easy to read as possible. So, you know, for the appeals, you're looking at errors. In any order or requirement decision or refusal, you're looking at a question regarding the way that the zoning is interpreted. And that can be either with the zoning map, or it can also be with how the zoning language has been interpreted, okay? Um, then a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship that would result from what the applicant's trying to achieve with, and that's why they're asking for the appeal. True, the same is true for, uh, a variance. Uh, with the variance, you're looking really at development standards. And these particular items, let's see, how can I get that off so I can read that? You, you, you're looking at, you know, these are the different development standards that you can make comment on or or, or not.
Act on.
Yeah, act on in terms of the variance. So area or with the lot, the front, side or rear setbacks, the off-street parking, landscaping standards, and then in terms of maximums, it's the height of the buildings. For appeal procedures and variance applications, um, this is a timing issue in terms of how people will, how you will be processing or reviewing these applications as they come in. So no less than thirty days telling the decision being appealed, okay? So it's possible that someone might bring in an, an, an application. We may know that there's going to be a variance or maybe something that would, might get appealed ahead of time. And so we would give them direction to have that application in the thirty days before that planning commission hearing, where the application for the project is being heard, and then concurrently you would be listening to the appeal or the variance at the same time.
Oh.
And then there's, what's that?
So, um, so we may be hearing a uh, I can't think of anything, a rezoning case, but they want a reduced backyard and we would hear those together.
Yeah, a good example would be like that XL three rigging. They did a variance for the driveway width.
The width and the actual sub-platform, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it could be that you're hearing that plus the rezoning plus the plat at the same time because now you're one board. One, you're, you're, you do both.
My mind that we would have to meet as the Board of Adjustments and then go out of that meeting and reconvene as planning commission, but this is just.
We're waiting on an official interpretation, but the way it reads, you have those duties now, not as a separate board.
And prior scheduling of BOAs were, you know, as needed.
Yeah.
But to be assisting to you and respective of your time, we would try and guide these additional applications to fall in line with your schedule of your planning commission.
Yeah. And so what we've talked about is possibly if somebody comes in and it's going to force a third Wednesday meeting, we might ask them, would you be willing to submit a letter waiving that so that we can have it on a regularly scheduled day? If they refuse, we may have to call a special meeting, but, um, I think most people are willing to do that.
Sure. I think we only had, we only had one in two years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it, it goes without saying, then obviously a public hearing is a part of that process. It'll be a noticing with that application. And then we would need, we would need to provide the written finding in the minutes of what you all decide as a BOA. Let's see. Appeal procedures and variance advocate, so continuing that further. So there'll be a motion, there'll be conditions. In the conditions component for variance or appeal, you, you're able to provide either a limitation on duration of the variance, or maybe suggest a lesser variance than what's been suggested by the applicant. There's got to be an affirmative vote. Uh, variances are granted to the personally to the applicant. They don't go with the land. So, um, those aren't transferable. Last, uh, okay, so review criteria for review appeals, you're basically determining if the decision is arbitrary, capricious, or is not in accordance with, uh, the intent and requirements of the, of the LDC. Uh, and then you're affirming or you're reversing the decision of the administrative official based on a planning commission decision. So those, those are the ways in which we'll be reviewing appeals and the criteria of that. With, um, the variance review, um, applicant or because of a variance carries burden of approving that granting of the variance or appeal, um, and is justified by reasons that are substantial, serious and compelling. The satisfaction of the PC or the BOA, uh, with the following criteria met, so about eight or nine of those, I'm not going to go through all of them, but that's what we'll use for, um, making sure that we meet your satisfaction. That's pretty much it.
I, I have a question.
Go for it.
I, I misunderstood this for a long time. You're, you're saying that a variance goes with the person, not the land?
Oh, my gosh, I had the same thought. It usually goes with the land, not the person.
Well, not like that, but.
That's not how code, this is how the code is reading right now.
So if I get a variance to build my garage and my back setback
Uh-huh.
and I sell my house.
I know.
Does that person have to come back to the Board of Adjustments?
Well, then it's a legal non-conforming, but that's the whole point of getting the variance is to avoid that. So that'll be an interesting one. I'm gonna put that on our possible code changes because that does not make sense at all.
I'm, I'm just glad that you got it too, because I was like, that's.
But I, I think everything that's come up during, during the Board of Adjustment, I mean, obviously it met those requirements and it was more so a a physical liability, you know, but you're right, it was a very clear-cut case to allow for the variance. But yeah, I mean, from the perspective of as it goes to the person, it wasn't even in question because they had all the documentation for the need of the variance.
I mean, it's, it seems counterintuitive that you would get a height variance and you build a building and then you move, the building is there, the person is.
Oh, no, no, I completely. Yeah, but I, like I said, all of them that have come through in the last two years have been off of a physical characteristic of an individual that needed the variance.
But I, I guess I would ask the question, having never done it. Are there variances that can be awarded that cannot be grandfathered? You know, I'd like to think of a building height variance.
All your dimensional stuff is pretty much going to be grandfathered.
They're going to grandfather that, but are there variances that can come before us that may be used by the applicant, but when somebody else came in?
I think it's.
Variance wouldn't apply.
That's an interesting question is if I get a height variance and I move two houses down, does that height variance now go with me to that new location, which seems it wouldn't be legal because those adjacent property owners weren't notified and therefore, so I think this is something we'll really need to look into. Um, it's kind of confusing to me because.
It makes more sense if we're talking about good conditional use. But not when, when you're talking about a variance associated with.
Well, it doesn't even make sense with a conditional use because you grant this conditional use, they put the use into place, they sell the business, the next person comes in, now the use isn't allowed. A conditional use also runs with the land. So I, anyway, we'll look into it.
Yeah.
I'm glad it.
Well, apparently these things will come up frequently.
Yeah, yeah, we got time.
We're diving into the details, so we're finding a bunch of stuff.
Anything else on the charter?
No, that's it. Just wanted to give them an understanding of BOA responsibilities that they now have.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
All right, Sheila.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-three, please.
I'll jump into these really quick, um, code updates. As we're going through the code, just like now, um, we're making lists and as, um, so as you know, the code was adopted in twenty-one, I think that's right, late twenty-one. Um, so since that time, there have been a, a few things that we've noticed that are questionable, that are possibly wrong. So we will, our goal initially was possibly to bring like a big, what we call a code scrub, where we have a list and we take you through all the different ones that we're going to change. Some of them are, um, like, for instance, the light industrial district has a five-hundred-foot setback from residential. It only applies to a PUD boundary. So, which doesn't make sense in the way it's worded in the code. I think the intent was that it would be from any residential boundary, but it says specifically PUD. So things like that, that we've noticed, we're starting a list of, this would be another one. Um, our, initially, we thought we would just bring those to you as a whole set, but now we've been in discussions with, um, the clerk and the town manager, because we're going to be doing a, a code scrub based on the charter, making changes throughout, making references from Board of Trustees to Town Council, um, the charter change with the planning commission now being the BOA. We're not sure if we're going to be doing them individually, or if it's all going to be handled at one time. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. You may see some come to you because they're more urgent. Um, then you may have others that we just kind of wait on and we do as we update based on the charter. Um, the other, one of the ones we probably will be bringing to you and to the council is, um, changes to our signature blocks. Um, there are some wording there that we need to do, and since it's codified and it requires us to put mayor, Board of Trustees, we want to get those changed sooner than later, just because they make more sense to have those on a recorded documents to reflect correctly. So. Um, next is comprehensive plan update. We have been meeting, we're going to be trying to get some grants. Um, we have two hundred thousand in the budget. We're hoping to get another two hundred thousand in grants so that we have a really big chunk of change to go and get a good comprehensive plan done. So once we have the grant funding in place, then we will go out for an RFP, bring someone in. With that much money, we should be able to get a good one. We've started making a list of elements that we'd like to have included. Um, of course, you know, the basics like land use, um, and then our goals and objectives, but we'd like to do economic development, maybe even try to get a transportation plan in place. We've talked about parks, trails, recreation, uh, economic development, affordable slash workforce housing planning, um. There were a few others, but we're trying to create a list of elements that we'd like to have, um, addressed. We may not get all of them, depending on how much money we actually do wind up getting, but we're, we're creating a list of that. And so the plan would be to hire someone, have them come in, and we'd start on that. Do, we really want to focus on public engagement, so we want to get a lot of people involved. Um, some of the comments I've heard about the last one is that there wasn't really enough public engagement to really, and people didn't really know what was going on. This is from some of the property owners who complained, well, my property is now shown as a park. So, um, we, we want to make sure that we have a really good public engagement. And then after our comp plan is adopted, we can go into sub-area plans like the downtown plan or maybe an Easterly plan.
When was that comp plan?
Twenty seventeen, and the goal is to do them about every five years, so we're right on time. Um, and we would do that, and then the thought is, is by the time that's done, then it would be time to update the code again. And we can try to make the code more reflective and in line with the goals of the comprehensive plan.
So I've got a quick question. And this may have been addressed since then. I, I attended the, uh, the swearing meeting, I think it was January third.
Okay.
And that's when KFC was presented. And Stephen King, is it Stephen or Steve?
Steve.
Steve King brought up a point, which I thought was pretty even spot on, is what do, what do we want the future to look like with new buildings or new shops?
Oh, the design standards.
Right.
Yes.
We don't want, we don't want a rainbow of buildings, right? And with that being incorporated here, because if you don't do it now, you address it two years from now, you already have twenty buildings built.
Right.
You have another twenty that have already been approved. You know what I mean? It's, it's too little, too late.
Ideally, you would do it during the comp plan time, so you get feedback from your citizens on what they want that to be. Um, do we want like all browns? Do we want a mix of stone and metals, or do we want hot pink? I mean, you get that input and then from the comp plan, you get the guide, so then you go out and actually do the design standards and you incorporate them in your code. The issue is going to be that you're going to have a year, year and a half to do a comp plan, then you're going to have to go back in and start the code process, which is another year, year and a half. It could drag out for three years before you have them in place. You could do something in, before then, do some at least generalized standards that we want to have. Um, but yeah, you're right, it could, depending on the process you go to and the level of detail, it could take a while to get those in place.
I have a related question, oh, sorry. Um, it used to be, and I realize PDs have changed to PUDs in, in Orlando's name, but it used to be that, uh, for PDs, the developer was required to submit their design guidelines for that entire PUD. And I ran into a developer outside after one of our meetings and, uh, was, we were discussing it and I said, why aren't your guidelines in our packet? I haven't seen any of your guidelines. I have no idea what you're doing. And they said, then I'll require them.
I'd have to look at our checklist to see, but I think they are.
The checklist that I've seen and that we're working with, design guidelines is a checkbox. There's a part of those.
We said that nobody had ever asked for them and, and thank you, Danny, it was before all of your, it was the previous, previous. Uh, that's good to know. I mean, that would be helpful, just to have those.
Right. So you at least get those for those, but you, you would get it for the straight zoning, though. Right.
I was merely going to say that in talking about the comp plan and various elements, some other ones that we were alluding to that we didn't mention, uh, you, there could be a placemaking element. There could be an urban design component to it. There could be, um, a number of other items that could be looked at.
You talked about the aging and place elements.
Yeah. Art and culture. Jumping around here in different categories, but infrastructure, you know, there are different things that can be addressed and thought about when you're doing a comp plan update. It's, it, it comes down to how big is your budget? And, and the budget then gets played out into how detailed those different sections will be. And the comp plan then becomes, and a lot of times when the budgets aren't large, it's a jumping off point for future planning work to be done later in terms of like sub-area plans and other like more.
Element-specific.
Profi-, you know, yeah, very specific, uh, topic issues. You might have a traffic plan or a traffic element in the comp plan, but it will give you implementation strategies of in the next two or three years, we're going to do a full-blown transportation study on these five sub-area plans, or something like that.
Well, yeah, and, and in transportation, if we don't have transportation projects in the comp plan, we can't get the stiff with the tip. We can't get funding. So.
And we'll probably come to you with, here's what we've identified as the top based on projects and direction we're getting and do you agree? Do you disagree? What, what do you think we might add up? So we'll probably start prioritizing those as we get closer. Like after we find out how much money we have, we've already started doing some initial investigation on how much each of those different elements cost to do. You know, an economic development study might be thirty grand to eighty grand, depending on how much you do. So you add in economic development, then you add on park, and finally we get to the max of our budget. So we'll probably come to you with, based on what, how much funding we have and what we think the priorities are. Here's the ones we want to do. And then here are the ones we would add if we have money left over. Um, and then keep you in the loop as to what we're doing.
Perfect.
And I think we're done.
Yes.
Unless you have other items. Oh, go ahead.
I've run off three pages of the, you'll pass those down. Three pages of the comprehensive plan. That I think are very important, that's the planning commission and. That's the Planning Commission and for our new gentleman on here. The other folks have heard me quote these on more than one occasion, I've highlighted them. I think the first page, under the findings of substantial comprehen- compliance with the future, and I've highlighted down here, here's what the citizens said they want this Planning Commission to do. If the development application or request does not substantially conform to the comprehensive plan, the Planning Commission may request that the application is amended to conform with the adopted plan, may deny the application, modify or place conditions on the application to ensure that the application is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. And it's very difficult for the planning department to fulfill that requirement and bring it to us, okay? And I think that's very important that we understand that. And then I think it's important on the finding the consistency with the adopted policies. I've highlighted the last sentence. The plan should inform strategic initiatives and priorities for staff, the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees, policies which were developed through the extensive community engagement process, seek to balance the right of the individual and the interest of the community at large. And that is something that I think that they charged us with as a Planning Commission because they can't all come here to do it. On page two, I've just highlighted, because I think this is very important, and I think right now it's really important with all the residential that we have going in. As new development proposals are submitted, it is critically important to maintain a balance between residential and non-residential uses to maintain the overall fiscal health of the community. Non-residential uses have a property tax rate of twenty-nine percent and the added benefit of potential sales tax and real property tax revenues versus seven-point-nine-six percent property tax revenue for residential. And I think that has a great impact on what we can and can't do. And then, uh, disregard, well, you don't have to disregard, that, that, uh, last page, I, I did pull the policies for land use, one through eight, and then the comment below. The reason number six is highlighted is because I quoted that the last, in the last meeting. But I, I think we need to be aware of that. There's a lot in the comprehensive plan. I think every commissioner should read the comprehensive plan. Certainly, we shouldn't be questioning everything that comes up based on the comprehensive. I mean, but there are some things in there that I think we have a right to discuss here and then determine whether it's appropriate to, to tell the council we'd like to look at. And I think those things that I've highlighted here are significant in what our responsibility is.
Thank you.
I would, I would even tailor that a little bit more is, I mean, right now with the new council, as they're established, is there a way or is there a forum with us as the Planning Commission that we could understand exactly what their goals are to achieve within the town? I would say, what are those densities? What are those ratios between commercial versus residential? And then what is, what is their design or what is the forward-looking design on which they are planning to attend? What, what are they looking for? Because again, that gives us that criteria to at least bring some subjectivity to what's coming through and does it meet that? Right now, we're blinded. I don't know what the, I don't know what the council, what do they see as density? Me, I see anything that is not a single-family home. And I'm not being biased, I just don't know what they see it as indifferent. Yeah, but, but again, I mean, again, now we become the road bump instead of the value.
Probably, um, a diverse opinion.
Sure.
Getting some input, so we can, let us talk and see how we can, maybe it's during that training that we end with.
I, I think that would be wonderful. Yes, ma'am.
Sheila, I have one other question real quickly. Last March, um, Alternate Commissioner Tony Peck and I attended a Jackson Creek Parkway stakeholder meeting. And I don't think there's been any activity or any communication since March. Do you have any idea where we stand on that, or is there any way we can get something before the next meeting?
So I, so, let me start over. The goal is to try to get something on the website coming up soon. So we, the plans are at thirty percent. As, I don't know if any of you know, but so Classic will be doing the improvements at one oh five, and then that's been taken out of the Jackson Creek Parkway, um, because of the Davis Bacon, it helps save money. And then the town has the rest of it. We are about thirty percent on the plans. We're trying to go to the next phase. So the, um, stakeholder meetings, um, we're doing with CSI in a week or two. Then they're going to start meeting with the HOAs, the school district and all of those. So let me talk to them about a, um, some kind of presentation to the Planning Commission before those start. I know that's in their timeline, I just can't remember what it is exactly. But I do know that the actual public engagement part is coming up soon, hoping to start construction fall twenty-four. But again, it comes down to funding and right now we're a little in the hole, so trying to find some more grant money and getting that done.
Yeah, no, just several questions that I'll be asking on that, because again, that was with the bonding, they would not open up Phase One before.
Before?
Before that was completed.
That I don't know, I can't speak to that.
That one's going to be ugly.
I just know we've run into some issues. I can tell you one issue is there are some really big fiber optic cables right there at one oh five, and that was a big hit on the budget, so, um, working on, still working to try to get all the funding in place, but let me look at the timeline to see when we can get Planning Commission in and hopefully before we start the public input with all the other, um, HOAs, school district and all of that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, concerns, solutions, suggestions?
And, um, Commissioner Needler, I will get you a Planning Commission handbook. Does anyone else need one? Have they lost theirs? Looking for some good nighttime reading? Okay, all right.
All right, at this time, I'd like to adjourn, uh, the Planning Commission meeting on, uh, today, it'd be in, uh, February eighth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you for coming. Great job, man. You're gonna, you're gonna be right here soon.